And call the meeting in order, start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I could ask for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
We've been muted, so I will ask again for the approval of the agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have everybody participating, do we have names to them? For the minutes. Can we unmute that one and then? Phone number in, it's 6843, can you identify?
This is John Zimmerman, Butler County, resident.
Thank you, John. I believe we have everybody. So next, I will ask for the approval of the minutes for 422, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 22nd, 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment for 429, 2020.
I will make a motion to approve the April 29th, 2020 claims for payment.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Um, yes. Isn't there a, a charge, what is it, $22,000 or something to Perry? Or, for what?
Pay, yeah, Perry Ag Services or whatever.
Herbicide, Julie.
It's herbicide for roadside.
Uh, for road sides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was competitively bid, he's lowest bidder.
Okay. Did you hear that, Julie?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now I have is utility permits.
I'll make a motion to approve utility permit UT-20-019 for Harton Iowa Communications. And that is fiber optic phone line, boring conduits and plowing fiber cable.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. BJ?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next I have is John Cook with U.S. Census Bureau regarding the 2020 census.
Oh, hi, hi, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning, um, thank you for having me, I hope everybody is healthy and safe. My name's John Cook, I'm a Senior Partnership Specialist in the United States Census Bureau. And up until a month ago, my job was to drive around Iowa and to talk to folks about the census and give updates. And now my job is to go on computers and tell people about the census. So, I wanted to just kind of give you an update of where we are. We've been collecting self-response for a little over a month now. And we've just crossed in the last week or so the 50% threshold for the country. So, 50% of the households in the country have responded to the 2020 census, we're really excited about that. Obviously, 50% more to go. I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of where Harden County is and then answer any questions that you guys might have. So, I'm gonna try to share my screen here. And, should be this one. And you can see your agenda, but what I'm really gonna do is move some of the Skype stuff or the Zoom stuff out of the way. This map here, okay. So, this is a tool that's on our website, 2020census.gov. And it's what we call our Response Rate Map. And it's how you can see almost in real time how the country, state, city, county census tract are doing for self-response. And I'll give you kind of a guide here, it's a color-coded map. So it starts down here in the dark, we're calling it dark orange amber of color. It gets lighter as you go along and then switches to blue at 50% and then switches and goes darker. So realistically, you want to be dark blue. So, as you can see, Minnesota is just slightly ahead of us. And, yep, at 64.3%, they're leading the country. And I'm very happy to say as of yesterday, Iowa is in second place, doing quite well. We have been jockeying back and forth with Nebraska and with Wisconsin. So, if you want to help us out, we really, really want to beat Nebraska, Wisconsin, and we'd like to take Minnesota. But Iowa's doing a really good job of responding, like I said, 61.4% of all the households we've heard from in some way, either over the internet, phone, and now paper questionnaires are being mailed out. So, people are doing a good job sending them back in. You can look at this from a county perspective, and I'll zoom in here and sometimes there's a little bit of lag. So, you can see how the counties are doing, again, with the dark orange all the way to dark blue. We've got a couple counties we're trying to work up, Dickinson, most of the vacation homes up there by Okoboji and Spirit Lake. But I want to focus in on Harden's doing well, 59.4%, so lagging a little bit behind. Iowa's self-response rate is 61.4%, but still very good. And then we can actually look, I'll select Harden. And then I will break it down by census tract. You can also click on city and pull up individual cities and see how it's doing. But I'm sorry to stay at the county level just for this meeting, but we can dig into that if you'd like. So, obviously, again, dark blue is better, so we've got a couple, you know, down here. Oh my gosh, New Providence, Union, Witten doing their jam-up job getting those in. Western half of Iowa Falls doing a really nice job, so the Aldens and Akleys, you know, Akley are actually kind of coming in there. And then this is Eldora, so overall, very good. We still want to emphasize, obviously, to get everybody to self-respond. And so we're encouraging all of our partners, especially those at the county level. If you can help us do an internet push, I can share with you some resources that we have. Feel free to create your own stuff and put it out on social media or traditional media, radio, TV, paper, whatever you guys feel will be most effective. We just want to keep encouraging self-response. Obviously, we're all adapting to the COVID-19 environment, the Census Bureau is no different. We have halted all of our field operations, although there are plans in place to begin them later in the summer. The plans are under review, and as soon as they become concrete, I will be happy to share them with you. The biggest thing we're considering are three things that we want to keep in mind. We are still dedicated to the mission of the 2020 census, which is to make sure that we get an accurate count of the entire population of the U.S. But we also want to make sure that we keep the public safe, and we want to make sure that we keep our people safe. And so, all those things are in our mind as we make plans moving forward in this environment, so. With that, I think that's pretty much my spiel. Do you guys have any questions, can I do anything to make your life easier?
I don't know.
Yeah. We do have, it looks as though someone has commented, or Jess Sheridan has commented, that we have been posting info on Facebook and the census, about the census. And there's a link on the website under the Supervisors page also for the census.
Wonderful, yeah, that's great, thank you. This weekend, May, actually it's Friday, yeah, so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, it'll be a month since Census Day, which was April 1. We're trying to do a nationwide social media storm. So to kind of encourage everybody to post one or two things every day, May 1, May 2, and May 3, just to get the word out everywhere and try to bump the numbers up a little higher. So if you guys would put that on the schedule, we greatly appreciate it, and I will send you one of my kids to say thank you.
Well, thank you, Jessica said will do.
Okay. Yeah, do you have any other questions, can I do anything else for you?
Well, it's up to everybody to do their part.
Yeah, I will say, one of the things that we're talking a lot about these days is economic recovery. And I just, you know, I've always kind of wanted to add in that census data is going to play a really big part in how we recover economically from this. From grants to federal aid, it's census data and where that aid and those grants go are going to be linked together. So we really want to make sure that we get an accurate snapshot of everyone in the country.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for him? BJ? He's muted, we need to unmute him.
No, sir.
Okay.
Well, from there.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, I'll talk to you later.
All right.
From there, let's go to the Appropriations Resolution Amendment.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the Appropriations Resolution Amendment. This is amending appropriation amounts for general assistance, the amount of $6,000, mental health, and the amount of $381,000, and secondary roads engineer is $630,000.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? This is appropriations based off the budget amendment we just did. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye, motion carries. Next is the approval of the Iowa DOT Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Amendment. Taylor, this just mirrors the DOT budget to what we just did. Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the secondary roads DOT Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Amendment.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye, motion carries. Next is the Appointment of Americans with Disability Act ADA Coordinator, Taylor has volunteered for that position.
I'd make a motion to appoint Taylor Rawl to the position of ADA Coordinator for Harden County.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is the Abatement of Taxes. Michelle's still on, or I think she said she has no sound, if I remember reading that correct. Michelle, do you have sound?
Can you hear it?
Let's go ahead and mute her, we can't, we can't hear you, Michelle. She, she did send an email to us that said this is an extension for the previous abates that we are, that we did for care initiatives. They received a PAAB order that changed the status of the properties that they owned from multi-residential to residential for both '17 and '18 tax years. And the previous abatement orders only included the credits for 2018. This is to clear up the 2017 value changes and will extend to the 2020, 21 payable tax that we will be abating portion when the next, when the new taxes come out. They have a balance due on the second half tax for this year, and the credit that we should have abated for the '17 tax year is more than what they were supposed to be paid for in '17. So we'll have to remove that balance from the 2020, 21 payable tax years when they get certified.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to approve the abatement of taxes as presented by County Treasurer, Michelle Eichmeyer.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now what we have is a letter of support regarding the industrial park site certification. We did one of these similar five or six years ago. And they want to recertify that site and they're asking for our support again. Taylor, have you read this too?
But, I've had enough conversations with Mark.
Okay. So it says, "We are aware that you and Iowa Falls Area Development Corporation are working to have land in Iowa Falls Harden County Industrial Rail Park become recertified through the State of Iowa's Site Certification Program. It is our understanding that in order to proceed with the site recertification, you will need to reflect a minimum requirement of 250 acre continuous acres for land development. It is our desire to provide support for the industrial rail park in Harden County, and we are aware that some improvements on road access to the site will be required. In the event that company or firm would desire to locate in Iowa Falls Harden County Industrial Park site and require continuous acres that are not available to the west of JJ Avenue, we'd be willing to consider relocating and/or closing that road in order to meet the company's land requirements." The process we would need to follow for vacating the county roads is found in details under 4.030 of the Industrial Instructional Memorandum IM to local public agencies provided by Iowa Department of Transportation. This is based on adherence of Iowa Code Section 306.10. And you will find it attached to the letter. We estimate at the same time frame address vacancy process will take approximately two months. Is that fine?
Maybe take longer than that, but.
Should we change it before we approve it?
Probably.
What do you, what do we want that changed to?
Four.
Four months?
Yeah, just because, I mean, you have to get ahold of the landowner as a hearing. I don't know, two months is doable, but.
Well, that's why I was asking.
Every now and then you got a landowner that lives in Arkansas or Thailand, and it's hard to get ahold of them with certified mail. And my only concern, that it, it can be done, but it is a paved road, so the county's already poured a lot of money into that road, so keep that in mind.
But I believe.
Win your pros and your cons.
But I believe if they were doing this, this would be at their expense. Changing the road.
Or a RISE grant kind of thing.
Right.
Because it's not, it's part of Iowa Falls' truck route, so they should be a lot more concerned than Harden County. Just another thing to mention.
So to change it to four months is the only thing you would ask?
Probably.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the letter of support for the industrial rail park site certification with the noted change of changing from two months to four months for the process.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is the approval of the Iowa River Trail Paving Contract.
Okay, we've, the Trails Committee has been in the process, well, everyone working with the trail, has been in the process of combining some of these grants and projects for, we had two separate grant processes or whatever as far as the, the bridges, the, the bridges that we're going to be addressing this next, within the next year to two years. And then there was also one for the paving contract between Steamboat Rock and Eldora. And those projects now have been combined into one. So, at this point in time, I guess I would make a motion to approve the Iowa River Trail Paving Contracts.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Should be let, I think, is that November? And then, then it will begin, the work will begin next spring. And it should be, should be ready for use, I would say, was that 2021, I think?
And again, I would stress that these are grants and fundraiser dollars that have been.
Right, no county funds.
No, no county funding has been.
Did I say that right, is that let, yep, this fall, or is it over the winter?
I feel like we approved it for the FY 21.
Yeah. Yeah, after I said that, I think that's wrong. Yep. So. Who?
Let's unmute Donna. Donna, you got a question?
I don't think she's unmuted yet. Donna, are you there? It's not unmuted, there, okay.
Donna, now you're unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
This paving contract, I have a question regarding what kind of paving will be used?
I've had to talk to them, but I've never heard of anything for sure. I thought concrete, but I really don't.
Yeah, I, well, that's what I was thinking, but six-inch concrete, I think, 10-foot wide, is that?
I mainly talked to them about somewhere else. I said, if it's going to be soaked in water, don't make it asphalt. I don't think this says, so I don't think they've determined that yet. This might have been an contract with a designer.
In past years, national parks have found that blacktop paving leaches and can contaminate surrounding grounds. Now, I realize they use it on roads, but where you're wanting to preserve nature, national parks are going to concrete rather than blacktop.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it is concrete, Donna. Because that's, yeah, that's what it is up at Steamboat where they've started that already. That's, that's concrete. And, so I'm pretty sure it's concrete, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, there it is, on page nine.
Concrete.
Eight. Yep, six-inch concrete, 10-foot wide.
Yep.
Yep, Renee was right, six-inch concrete, 10-foot wide. Thank you, Donna. Any other comments? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have is approve employees' benefit system, EBS, for Cobra Administration.
I'd make a motion to approve the Cobra Administration being handled by EBS through IGHTCP.
I'll sec.
Effective, one.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now I have is change of status in the Sheriff's Office.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Corey Sederberg as Correctional Officer. It's a discharge effective April 20th. Our last day of work will be April 17th, 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 And also, I will.
Motion carries.
Oh, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Blake Daniel Monroe, hired as permanent part-time, part-time deputy, effective April 29th, 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is the COVID-19 update. Thomas, we're going to come to you here in a second. We'll get you unmuted. Can you hear us, Thomas?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I'm going to defer to Rocky, because there's a couple of questions about the testing at Hanson Family Hospital and the private testing that goes on at the clinics. And Rocky is the Public Health Representative for the Emergency Operations Center, so I'm going to defer over to Rocky.
So we will unmute Rocky then. Thank you.
Good morning. So we have had a couple of questions at our office about why people are unable to be tested if they are either living with or have been in contact that they know of with another patient that has tested positive. So basically, just to kind of provide an update, and I can send the link as well. It's on the State Hygienic Labs website, the criteria for being able to be tested. So it would be any hospitalized patient of any age with fever or respiratory symptoms, any older adult greater than 60 years of age with fever or respiratory systems and chronic medical conditions, person of any age with fever or respiratory illness who lives in a congregate setting, such as a long-term care facility, a dorm, residential facility, correctional facility, et cetera. And then any healthcare worker or essential service personnel, first responder, critical infrastructure worker with fever or respiratory illness. So a lot of our cases that we've been getting, we've noticed that the people are actually asymptomatic, but because they're working or living in those type of settings, that's why they're getting tested. So, we've noticed that that's why a lot of our numbers have been climbing, so.
Okay.
Were there any questions for Rocky, let's unmute all.
Yes, yes.
Julie?
I need to say that the numbers of, of people who have tested positive, and this is probably inaccurate, when you don't, as family members, of someone who's quarantined, has detected positive, and they are to us, you, they are positive, then they should be counted as positive or else test them. And people need to know what towns they live in. Just because you say, I, I would live in Eldora, is not a HIPAA violation, just saying. It's, no, that I believe the numbers are inaccurate and under-tested. So, you know, are probably not accurate. I'm acting back and then go ahead and open up restaurants in many cases while numbers are right from Chris to Chris. And if you think that someone who lives with, person who's tested positive, you think that they're not positive, is not good, I mean, it's just, it's, those numbers aren't true. So don't, you know, don't count on only seven people in this county who have it. They're not testing, you can't get tested. They won't test at the hospital if you go on Test Iowa, nope. You call your family physician, they can't get tested either, so no, numbers are false. It's, it's unconscionable, but whatever.
Probably all the more reason that I would continue the social distancing, wearing a mask if you do have to go out. So it just keep taking the necessary precautions, I guess.
There's two recognized parties in the state of Iowa, and the primary is just the nominating process for those party candidates. So, like, I'm, I'm registered, no, I'm part.
Hey, were there any other comments for Rocky? Okay, hearing no more on the COVID update, let's go to public comments, everybody should still be unmuted.
Do we want to unmute Jessica then?
I, it sounded like she was on the phone.
Huh? Oh.
So were there any public comments? Is everybody unmuted right now?
Oh, Jessica's not.
Okay. So hearing no public comments, let's go to other business. Julie does have a public comment. Give me a second, Julie. We'll get you unmuted. There you go.
Again, we have an armed guard at the courthouse, which is close to the public. It would be a better way to spend money, again, support mental health, make sure that people in this county who need PPE, clinics, the hospital, first responders, have PPE. Spend our money on that. We do not need an armed guard, because that armed guard isn't going to be able to, you know, shoot the virus in the air. Again, it's a, not a responsible way to spend money. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Other business? Hearing none. I can ask for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.